Fifty-six A, three, three A, four, four A, five, five A, six and six A. And motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor? unanimous? We have four meeting minutes to approve. If there's no question on any of them in particular, we can take them all up at once for June fourteenth, two thousand and ten, June twenty-eighth, two thousand and ten, July nineteenth, two thousand and ten, and July twenty-ninth, two thousand and ten. All move.
Second being moved.
Motion made second, all in favor? unanimous? Thank you. Our first appointment is with Pepper Dining, Inc., doing business as Chili's Grill and Bar, request to obtain a common victual license for property located at two sixty-nine Main Street. How you doing?
Very good.
Come on up.
Thank you.
How you doing?
How are you tonight?
Good. Could you just state your name for the record?
Yeah, Mike Cronin.
Okay. And did you have anything to say for the?
Well, we're just, everything's pretty much done over there, and I'm here as, I was told to show up this evening and represent Pepper Dining.
Okay. Any recommendations from?
Mr. Chairman, we have recommendation from the health director, Shelley Newhouse, who recommends approval of the common victual license for Pepper Dining, which indicates that things have met her approval, and from the inspector of buildings, who reviewed the application and has no outstanding zoning issues.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or a motion from the board?
Do we know when they're gonna open?
Do you know when? Yeah. When are you planning on opening?
September twentieth.
Just welcome to the community. I own a restaurant well in town and just wish it best of luck.
Thank you very much.
I know it's a great company, and best of luck.
Things are going great with the hiring and everything, so. I do have one question as far as the liquor license is concerned. When can we pick that up and how does that transpire? Because we still haven't received it.
You might call the town manager's office tomorrow and we'll work that out.
Okay. Very good. That was the only question I had for you guys.
May I ask, what's your role with the organization?
I'm actually the managing partner. I was here a while back for the liquor license hearing.
Familiar, I just wasn't sure. I didn't see your name on the application here.
Yeah, I'll be the one on the liquor license. And this is Jerry, she's the bar manager, so.
Hi, Jerry.
I noticed also that when I was driving by it, and I don't see it here, but it doesn't really matter, the pickup area for food, it's not a drive-through per se, is that correct?
Correct.
So people would need to park out in the parking lot and walk to that side door?
There's specified areas to park for to-go.
Okay.
And then they would walk to the building and get their to-go and then leave.
Cool.
There's a special walkway right there.
When's your expected intent of opening?
As far as sales?
Yeah, open, yeah, open it up to the public.
Well, we're opening September twentieth. I'm not sure, you're asking about sales-wise?
That's what he just asked.
September twentieth, we're opening, yeah. That's our grand opening.
Any other questions or comments?
We should have CEO of the building by tomorrow, I believe. We still have to have the, a couple of people come out tomorrow and sign off on a couple of things, but we should have CEO of the building tomorrow.
Very good. Any other questions, comments, or a motion from the board?
I would move to approve the common victuals license for Pepper Dining, doing business as Chili's.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made second, all in favor? unanimous?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, good luck.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Nice to see you as well.
Is this a meeting at seven-ten, or?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Our second appointment is with Mulhender Kumar Alhewalja, request to obtain common victual license for property located at two eighty-five Main Street, Subway, number three-two-six-two-two.
Yes, sir. That would be me.
How'd I do with the name, okay?
Yes, you did excellent.
Okay. Good evening.
Yes, and how are you all?
All right, thanks. Okay, what is your affiliation with Subway?
At this moment in time, I actually have no affiliation. I'm in the process of buying out the existing owners.
Okay. Any recommendations from departments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, the Board of Health recommends approval on the common victual license, and the building inspector also has reviewed the application, and there are no outstanding zoning issues. If, I would point out, if the board is going to vote to approve, just want to remind the applicant that we need to be provided with a workers' compensation certificate.
Yes, I am sure to be aware of that.
Any other questions, comments, or motion from the board?
I'd move to grant the request, subject to authorizing its release upon receipt of the workers' card coverage.
I'll second their motion. Motion made second, all in favor?
unanimous?
Thank you, good luck.
I appreciate it. All right, you're do-
Good night. Okay, communications.
Mr. Chairman, you have copies of correspondence from Standard and Poor's regarding the affirmation of the general obligation, long-term rating for the town of Wilmington of AA-plus stable. So we're obviously very pleased with this. As you know, back several months ago, March, April, we were rated by Standard and Poor's, and they came back with a AA-plus rating. We had to go through a similar process again because of the bond authorization that is going through that we'll talk about later in the meeting. And as a result of a further review, which included providing a tremendous amount of material to them, you have a copy, I think, of the prospectus that we sent, the official statement that has a myriad of information that was compiled by various town offices. The results of that will be discussed later, but the result of the rating services was that, in their opinion, the rating reflects the town's specific strengths, meaning the access to Boston, a relatively low unemployment rate, strong to very strong income, and extremely strong wealth indicators, good available fund balance at fiscal two thousand and nine year-end, and general fund surplus projected for two thousand and ten, and a low debt burden coupled with an extremely rapid amortization schedule. And then they go on to talk about the community. They also indicate that the town's financial management practices are considered good under Standard and Poor's financial management assessment methodology. And in addition, they say, in their opinion, the town's overall net debt remains low, and that the stable outlook reflects Standard and Poor's expectation that the town will continue to maintain its good financial position. The town's access to the Boston economy and management's good financial management practices lend further stability to the rating. So I think that's something that is certainly appropriate for us. I can tell you that the, as you know, we did go to the market on the four million five-hundred-and-forty-thousand in general obligation municipal purpose loan, two thousand and ten bonds. It was a competitive process, and we got what I believe was an incredibly good rate, a low rate of two-point-seven-six-six as a borrowing rate, as an interest rate. It was highly competitive. I've not seen that kind of rate in my twenty years here. Obviously, it's something that makes sense for the town. It includes a premium of two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand dollars that'll come back to the town. The net interest cost on this would be one million one-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand dollars payable, along with the four million five-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars over a twenty-year period. And you can see, if you've had an opportunity to review the prospectus and the official statement, just how that works out. Later in the meeting, we'll be required to get an official motion and a vote authorizing and reaffirming the sale by the board of selectmen. But if you have any questions about the credit rating, it's pretty much as I've indicated, and again reaffirms the rate that was established just a few months ago.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a quick comment. This is great news for the town, especially the taxpayers in the community. I want to commend the town manager for putting together a good budget and leading us into this direction. Also, the conservative approach that the board has taken reflects this as well, so I think it's a win-win situation, not only for the town, for the people, also for the bill in the community. And once again, the manager did a good job pursuing this and putting everything together as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree, and I know a lot of work went into a few months back when we got the initial rating, and you and your staff should be commended on that, and it shows all the hard work leading up to that to get us there. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to recognize also the work, in particular, of the town accountant, Mike Morris, and the treasurer, Pam McKenzie, and the principal assessor, Skip Moynihan, and of course Beverly, who worked with me in putting this thing together. The next piece of correspondence is the correspondence from George Driscoll, the deputy general counsel for the Massachusetts School Building Authority regarding the high school feasibility study agreement. He's provided to us, this is the next step in the process for the high school project in terms of studying the various options that may be available to the town, should it choose in the future to construct. And this is the feasibility study agreement that indicates that the town is ready for the next step in accordance with MSBA. We had thirty days in which to prepare the various documents. We will be, and the date of this letter was July twenty-first, we will be FedExing that material to MSBA tomorrow. All of the material has been put together, and so we remain on track with providing the information. The next step, after all of these signatures are in order and after everything is executed, is the hiring of a project manager. Now, we've already done the advertising for that, the official advertising that had to appear in the central register through the Secretary of State's office. We will be doing a preliminary meeting with any of the interested applicants. Beverly, do you know how many have expressed an interest so far? Do you have that number?
Just, uh-
I know, just immediately, there were half a dozen, and probably within the last day or two, I'm sure we'll have a dozen or more. More than that? Okay, so over, over a dozen project manager firms or individuals have expressed an interest at this point. There will be a preliminary meeting at the high school with those folks on August twenty-fourth, and then in September, we will be, we will be looking at submission information from whomever decides to apply, and then we will review that through the school building committee and ultimately hire a project manager. Once we hire the project manager, that will take us to the next step, which, you know, will be to hire a designer. The project, it's gonna take a while to get somebody on board, but we are working in conjunction with the schedule that is approved by the MSBA. And once that person comes on board, well, if the chairman would like, we can bring him in, similar to the way we went through the process before with the, with the middle school and the public safety building. The board has a copy of a memorandum that was sent to me from the superintendent of the Department of Public Works, Don Onisite, regarding the FEMA assistance request for the severe storms and flooding that took place between March and April of this past year. We have completed all of our submissions to FEMA and in turn, MEMA, and requested funding for those costs that were incurred by the town in its response to the flooding events. And this is just a breakdown. We are estimating that the total eligible cost is one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars. We would receive, if they approve all of those costs, around seventy-five percent of those funds. Now, the one thing I want to point out is that there is some work that we believe should have been approved for reimbursement, but was determined by FEMA, at least at this point, not to be eligible. They've indicated that due to the pre-existing damage to the Whipple Road or Nichols Street Bridge prior to the floods in March of two thousand and ten, that funds to repair the bridge would not be eligible. That was FEMA's initial determination. We indicated to FEMA that we intended to appeal the determination. The basis for the appeal is that while we agree that there was pre-existing damage to the bridge as a result of previous flooding of the Shoshine River, the bridge was open to unrestricted traffic prior to the March floods, and it was the March floods that caused the damage that resulted in the bridge being closed. That's the argument that we are making, along with the town of Bill Ricker, and of course, Tewksbury, although they don't have ownership of the bridge, is also vitally interested as well. At our request, the FEMA project specialist assigned to Wilmington did develop a project worksheet for the project. They estimated at this point that the only funds that we would get would be enough money just to do some immediate repair, but that would only enable some crossing of the, of the bridge for a short period, and certainly it's not something that we believe should allow the bridge to be open for anything more than an emergency. That amount of money was less than fifteen thousand dollars, with an equal amount to be assigned to Bill Ricker. There is a meeting scheduled again this week with the Wilmington and Bill Ricker Public Works folks. We've invited the town of Tewksbury to join us. I have had some conversation with the legislative delegation in that if the three communities might get together, we may have some more influence in trying to get some money for the bridge. But, you know, to fix the, the bridge, to come into a passable situation, we're probably talking two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-thousand dollars, and that money just simply is not available. The other interesting point, of course, is the, the bridge mainly serves the town of Tewksbury. They're the ones who are most affected by that, and certainly, we want to be good neighbors, but it's sort of a two-edged sword. We've actually had a lot of interest in keeping the, keeping the bridge the way it is, because those residents from Wilmington find that the cut-through in that area has made life much better for the Wilmington residents who are traveling down there, and they're still able to access Brown Street and, and go out to Route Thirty-Eight if they have to. So if you go down Nichols right now, you can still take a right and head into Tewksbury, you just can't take a left and go into Bill Ricker. Obviously, the bridge needs to be repaired at some point, and we will report back to you after dawn. Onisite has further meetings with representatives in the communities affected, as well as more decisions emanating from FEMA as a result of our appeal. The board is being provided with correspondence that was sent to Christina Stewart from Robert Mayer, the director of the Board of Library Commissioners for the state. He was announcing a provisional award of ten thousand dollars for a customer services grant to the library to be used for library services and technology. And so this is a grant, competitive grant, that the library, that the library had applied for, and they were successful. They will be developing a customer service program to address how to improve customer service, how to deal with patrons, and how to resolve any issues about some of the use of the new technologies. And this is coming, the money is being funded through a grant. The board has been provided with information from the Massachusetts Municipal Association via a legislative update regarding several issues. As you know, the legislature ended formal sessions back at the end of July, and they enacted several key matters, including an economic development and sales tax holiday, which just took place, measures concerning healthcare and quarry reform. The House also gave final approval to the wind siding bill, but that measure failed to receive a final enactment vote in the Senate by the close of the session. What they do talk about here is the whole issue of expanded gaming, which by now everybody has read about, that has not moved to the next step at this point, based upon the differences that the legislature has with the, with the governor. And also, there was some interest in the past about the economic development and permit extensions. The governor signed the Act Regarding Economic Development, which took immediate effect back on August fifth, and the act includes a significant provision for land use permit granting authorities that will extend the duration of certain land use approvals by two years. We had this discussion with the board, I believe, at the last meeting or the prior meeting, in which this essentially takes away a little of the local control, but that, that ended up being passed by the legislature and signed into law by the governor. You have a copy of a letter from Alan French, who chairs the Base Circuit Alliance, that was sent to Paul Materazzo of the Andover Planning Department. It's provided to you because it's official comments on the I-93 interchange project, and each community has provided any of the official comments to the other two communities. In this case, the Base Circuit Alliance is a consortium of environmental groups, mostly made up of Andover groups, that include the Essex County Green Belt, the Andover Conservation Commission, the Andover Trails Committee, the Andover Village Improvement Society, the League of Women Voters for Andover and North Andover, Mass Audubon, Shoshine River Watershed Association, and the Trustees of Reservations. And they simply made comments urging the protection of open space and recreation in that area, including access to all bike trails and other bike crossings in the, in the area, looking to provide more of those trails that would connect the communities. Essentially, it's a comment on various environmental aspects of what they call a worthwhile project, and they express appreciation for being allowed to be a part of the planning process. I don't believe another meeting has been scheduled, Mike, for the task force. Nothing is scheduled as of right now. I do have a copy of a memorandum that was sent to me from Joe Connaughton, who is the executive director of PERAC, which is the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission overseeing public retirement matters in the Commonwealth. And he's just noting that back in July, the governor signed a municipal relief act, which provides for an early retirement incentive program for municipal employees if the chief executive officer is so inclined. And I just provided this to you, to you for your information. As you know, in the past, we've not gone forward with these kinds of programs because they've not been financially beneficial to the town. And as chief executive officer, the statute indicates that in order to go forward, it must be a program that is submitted by, in this case, the town manager, and it's, in my judgment, it makes little or no sense to establish such a program, with no intention to move forward. We do have a letter from the city manager in Lowell, Bernie Lynch, regarding a home rule petition relative to the authority to negotiate and purchase group insurance policies without being subject to collective bargaining. Again, you've read about this. This is a position that the Mass Municipal Association and most communities have taken in terms of urging the legislature to give the same authority to the cities and towns that they have in terms of managing healthcare. Certain communities, most notably Lowell, starting this, is looking at the possibility of a home rule petition, basically as another way around, you know, design plan changes for health insurance, municipal health insurance programs. And he's urging communities to file similar home rule petitions in order to obtain this authority. Such a petition would normally go through the town meeting. I think we can certainly put this in our list of things to look at once town meeting comes forward. Certainly, a city would act by its city council, but the town, we would have to act through its town meeting. And my recommendation is that we, we hold this and we take a look at it once, once the time comes. Right now, we're not experiencing too much of a difficulty, but certainly, this is something to look at. I would also expect that if, if one of these pieces of home rule legislation passes, then you'd see a domino effect. But I think it's gonna be very difficult to pass any one of these when this is something that affects the entire Commonwealth, and at this point, the legislature has not shown an inclination to pass a design change implementation statute. The board has correspondence from the MMA on the statewide essay contest for sixth graders, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We did consult once we received this with the school department, who indicated an interest in participating again, and we have forwarded our request to participate in the project, and we will wait to hear from the MMA. They have a limit of a hundred communities. We've participated every year. This is the fifth annual contest, and as the board knows, in the past, former chairman Newhouse and I have attended meetings with the sixth graders at an assembly, and then the sixth graders take on as a project their individual essays. And there are three, I believe, three winners each year that are selected among all of the thousands of entries that come in, and in two of those four years, the town of Wilmington has had somebody who has been recognized, so that's a pretty, pretty good record. And we'll, we'll try this again this year. The board has a correspondence that was directed to the chairman from the MAPC, and they were asking for an update of the twenty-five-year population and employment projections, and as the chairman is aware, has sent this information over to the planning director and asked Mrs. Hamilton to prepare the information for the MAPC, and that information will be provided to them by the date requested, which I believe is August twenty-fourth. The Conservation Commission is, again, announcing their annual town cleanup day. This time, it is for Saturday, September twenty-fifth. Everyone is invited to participate. Residents are urged to consider getting involved to clean up Wilmington's streams and parks by removing all of the man-made debris. The Conservation Commission will provide work gloves, and they request that if folks have them and they're so inclined to wade into a bit of thicker debris, they could bring hip books, hip boots with them. All residents, regardless of age, are invited to join the Conservation Commission on that date, again, Saturday, the twenty-fifth, from eight AM to one PM, a rain date the following Saturday. They're requesting that folks meet at the Whitfield School, if they can, at eight AM. And more information will be forthcoming with regard to this. This project is also done in coordination with some local businesses, as well as the Department of Public Works. The board has received a very nice letter from Jennifer Lawson, the community executive for the American Cancer Society, relative to its support for the Relay of Life that was held this past year in Wilmington. They note that thanks to the support of the residents of this community and others who participated- participated, that the event was a major success, and that they have raised over $179,000 just from this alone, through over 800 participants from the community and from surrounding towns. And so, they expressed their gratitude, and also have presented a certificate to the Board of Selectmen in recognition of their dedication and support in the fight against We have correspondence from Jane Lyman of Comcast regarding, first, their Comcast Customer Guarantee Service, in which they're indicating that they have introduced a Comcast Customer Guarantee relative to services that they provide. All of the residents who participate in Comcast, the subscribers, will receive this information. They'll also receive information regarding service updates, most notably, as of September, the HD Set Top Box Upgrade Charge of $795 will be renamed as a technology fee, and then effective in the middle of September, the Office Reactivation of Video Service will increase from $199 to $5. The first item I mentioned, the price remains the same. And finally, they are notifying the Board of upcoming changes to their channel lineup, specifically for the town of Wilmington, and that also will be provided to all of the subscribers, where they're moving certain digital channels to their digital starter package.
We should have an agenda writing for cable provider updates. I can't remember, meaning we didn't have one.
Mr. Chairman, the Board's being asked to consider approving and confirming the sale of the $4,540,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of the 2010 bonds dated August 15, 2010, which we just spoke about. Again, these funds will be borrowed over a 20-year period in accordance with the schedule that was outlined in the official financial statement that was provided to you. One of the criteria for going forward with this is that we need a very specific motion from the Board of Selectmen that was prepared by bond counsel. With your permission, I would like to be able to read the motion into the record and then ask if a member of the Board of Selectmen would move the motion.
Please do.
And it would be a motion that the town of Wilmington authorize the sale of the $4,540,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2010 bonds of the town dated August 15, 2010, to Janney Montgomery Scott, Inc., at the price of $4,827,627.90, and accrued interest would be hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds would be payable on August 15 of the years and in the principal amounts, and bear interest at the respective rates as follows, that being in years 2011, 12, and 13, an amount of $320,000 at an interest rate of 2.00, 3.00, and 3.50, respectively. For members of the press, I'd be happy to provide a copy of this motion. Don't ask me how you're going to write it up. It sounds pretty dry. Sorry for the interruption, but I could see people frantically writing. For the years 2014 and 2015, in the amount of $315,000 at an interest rate of 3.5% each year. For the years 2016, 17, 18, 19, and 20, in the amount of $310,000 for an interest rate of 4.5, 4.5, 4.0, 4.0, and 4.0, respectively. For the year 2021, in an amount for $140,000 at an interest rate of 2.8. 2022 and 2023, for an amount of $140,000 each year at an interest rate of 3.0. 2024, for an amount of $140,000 at an interest rate of 3.125. And 2025, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30, all for $140,000 at the following interest rates for each of those years, 3.25, 3.35, 3.50, 3.625, 3.75, and 4.0. And that further, in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated July 27, 2010, and a final official statement dated August 4, 2010, to be known as the official statement. Each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted, and further that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. And further, that the consent to the financial advisor bidding for the bonds as executed prior to the bidding for the bonds is hereby confirmed. And further, that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15 C-2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. And further, that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry and to effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Can you just say it one more time for me? Sorry.
Would need a... Like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion as stated by the town manager. Second.
Notion made second, all those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bottom line is that we did go forward with a bond offering of the $4,540,000 with an accrued cumulative interest rate of the 2.76%. The Board is being asked to consider approving the collective bargaining agreements between the town of Wilmington and the New England Police Benevolent Association Local 101, which represents public safety dispatches. As the Board is aware, since they've been involved in this, there are actually two individual contracts to be signed. The last contract expired on June 30, 2009, and this particular contract, if formally approved by the Board of Selectmen, would be a one-year contract with no changes, including a 0% raise. So, no raise in fiscal year 2010, which is consistent with what every other collective bargaining agreement has signed for, a union has signed for, including managers and non-union, as well as several of the unions in the school department, including the teachers. The proposal further calls for a second contract, a three-year contract for dispatches that would be effective July 1 of 2010 through June 30 of 2013, where the base compensation would increase by 2.5% over each of those three fiscal years. The only other change to the entire contract is a language change, which enables the town to schedule split shifts at its discretion based upon adequacy of staffing levels. And so, if the Board is so inclined, I would recommend that they adopt a motion to approve both of the collective bargaining agreements between the town and NEPVA Local 101 Public Safety Dispatches.
Questions, comments, motion?
I'll move that the Board approve the collective bargaining agreement between the town and NEPVA Local 101 Public Safety Dispatches, as described by the town manager.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor? Unanimous?
That's for both agreements, correct?
Yes. Both contracts.
I've tabbed where the Board is being asked to sign. Mr. Chairman, the Board is being asked to consider accepting a gift of land of approximately six and a half acres for the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission. This gift would be from James Mangano and Stephen Laurinson as trustees of Cranbury Lake Realty Trust. The land is located in the Marjory Road Extension, specifically Map 70 Parcel 101F. The Conservation Commission has recommended that the Board accept the gift. They did so at their meeting on August 4. The conservation subdivision is two lots. Again, the donation is approximately 6.5 acres, and this is essentially in keeping what the conservation subdivision program that was adopted by a bylaw several years ago by the town, where land must be kept available for the use of the community. In this case, we would increase the town's open space by six and a half additional acres. This has received a review of counsel, and the document is in order, should the Board be inclined to take the recommendation of the Conservation Commission.
Questions, comments, motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept as a gift the land of approximately 6.5 acres for custody and key and control of Conservation Commission from James Mangano and Steve Laurinson, trustees of Cranbury Lake Realty Trust, located on the Marjory Road Extension, Map 70 Parcel 101F.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, I believe it was Selectmen Lepore, who brought up an issue with regard to the need for a stop sign at the intersection of Washington Avenue and Clock Street. And so, as a result of that, we sent that information to the police chief and to the Department of Public Works Superintendent to review as to whether or not it was prudent to place a stop sign at the end of Washington Avenue at Clock Street. We received a response that they reviewed the request for the addition of a stop sign, and their recommendation is to place the sign at this location due to the new construction of a building at this location. They felt it would make good practical safety sense to do so, and it would be up to the Board of Selectmen to vote on the recommendation.
Questions, comments, or motion?
Move to accept the recommendation of the police chief and have the sign installed as outlined by the manager.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor? unanimous?
The Board has been asked to consider the request of Sharon Georgetown Clerk to appoint Rosemary Greco as an additional election worker for the elections to take place in
Questions, comments, or motion?
Move to grant the request.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
Second it. All in favor?
Board is being asked to consider the request of Marilyn Penny, the Secretary of the Wilmington Garden Club, to use the town common on Saturday, September 11, 8:30 a.m. to noon, for the purpose of a mini plant sale. I don't know if that means the plants are mini, or it's going to be a minimum amount of plants, but you'll have to attend, I guess, to find out.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motion?
Assume no scheduling conflicts.
There are no scheduling conflicts for that morning, Mr. Chairman, if you can.
Move to grant the request?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Not sure if things are going back and forth. The Board has a request of Michael Vitale to use the town common for the purpose of a wedding on Saturday, June 25, 2011, at 5:00 p.m. This would be simply for the wedding ceremony, as the reception is indicated would be held following the ceremony at the Knights of Columbus. If Selectman Newhouse asks the same question, I'm not sure what answer I could give him. I don't...
Year old.
I can only tell you that if there is another 4th of July celebration, and I suspect that there certainly would be, that they're not scheduled to begin on that weekend. I have preliminary dates from Scott Grant, which would not indicate that this would be a problem. I'm not aware of anything else. The schools would be over at that point, but at this point, we could certainly give them approval with the understanding that there may be other activities going on at the common, which is something that I always do anyways when we write the letter, just to let people know that it's a public place. But I'm not aware... When we become aware of a conflict, we let them know, but I'm not aware of any conflict, you know, particularly based on historical data, that in past, that particular Saturday has not been a problem.
5:00 p.m., which is toward the end of the day, sir.
So, it's not exclusive use of the common, per se? It's use of the bandstand area for half an hour or so?
Right.
There's no... It's just for the ceremony? There's no party going on thereafter? No cocktails? No excessive amount of...
Nothing. There would be no... There can't be alcoholic beverages anyways, and anything, any setup of chairs would all have to be taken off. They have to promise to clean the common. It's pretty much standard, so I don't expect that there would be a problem. The only thing is, when we are aware of something going on, we feel as though we should certainly want to let the bride and groom know. They might not want to have a, you know, a bouncy balloon going on while they're taking their vows or whatever. People tend to do there.
Any other questions, comments, or motion?
Move to grant the request.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? unanimous?
This next one is particularly challenging because it is a request from Maria Vauner to use the gazebo for her wedding day on September 24, 2011, between 2:00 p.m. and 3:00 p.m. We looked at the calendar, and that's the correct date. It is 2011, and it would be in September, so, or at least the day and date coincide. This is more difficult because we don't know whether or not there would be any actual games going on at the high school or anything like that. It's not likely that there would be an SAT event or anything, but again, if the Board's so inclined, they certainly can let them know, but advise them that we haven't got a full schedule yet of activities.
What day of the week is that? Is that Saturday?
It's a...
It is Saturday.
I believe it's Saturday, right? It's Saturday.
Are they looking to get married there, or just take pictures?
Well, the impression is, they're just saying using the gazebo, so the impression that we had is that they're looking to get married there. that we had is that they're looking to get married there.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I just... I always raise it just in case. We already know there's a conflict. We can talk to them, and I just don't want to be the one to call the happy couple if...
We can call them, and we can clear it up on behalf of the board to make sure that there's... This is what they intend.
It's so far away. I mean, if another event...
It's a one engagement. You never know.
I didn't want to suggest that. You never know what's going to happen between now and then in terms of other events, though, you know? If there's a large, I don't know, fall festival or something that comes about that seems like a viable use of the place, we don't want to say no to them because we got these guys approved for two hours of use, you know? So, it's hard. I'm reluctant to completely commit, but I have no objection to them using it, but I don't want to preclude other uses if another one comes up in the meantime. I don't know how you handle that.
No, I mean, the board may want to approve it based upon its availability, and I will. I'll take a look at it. That's sort of a compromise, I think.
I would move to approve it then, based on availability going forward.
I'll second.
Motion made. Second, and all in favor? Unanimous? Gazebo.
Well, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business before the board.
Thank you. Any public comments? Hearing none. New business committee reports.
I'll sit. I'll sit here.
I'll sit.
Nothing to report.
I'd just like to mention, last Saturday, when the residents come out to dedicate the new Veterans Memorial Bridge on 38, it was a nice turnout, nice day, and I really appreciate everybody coming out there, and as well as the John Rich Memorial there. The rededication ceremony took place, and that was also a very nice ceremony, and very well attended. I thank everybody for coming out.
I'm glad you're bringing it up. I probably should have thanked you for assembling that. It was a very nice ceremony, very impressive, and again, as you stated, it's good to see the patriotism and the commitment to our veterans that we have in Wilmington. So, thank you for putting that together. I thought it was a very nice ceremony.
Thank you. Important dates.
A rescheduled concert, and the last one of the season, is tomorrow evening, August 17, on the common, the group called Peking and the Mystics. It's an acapella group. I'm sure you'll enjoy it. It begins at 6:30 p.m. The town clerk's office notes that August 25 is the last day to register to vote for the state primary, which is September 15. But August 25 is the last day, if you're not already registered to do so. You can go to the town clerk's office up until 8:00 p.m. on that particular day, which will also be opened for passports through until 7:30. As a reminder, schools open on August 31, it's a Tuesday, for grades 1 through 12. And on September 6, Labor Day, the town offices will be closed. The following day, September 7, will be the first day of kindergarten. We will have a brush drop-off program in September on the 8th and the 11th at Old Main Street for residents only to drop off their brush from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on the 8th, and from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on the 11th. And again, you need to have a card to get in, and they can be picked up at the treasurer's office. The library will also resume its Saturday schedule on September 11. Haunted Tavern will hold an open house on September 12 from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. The next Board of Selectmen meeting is on the 13th of September. And again, the primary election is September 14.
That's it. Thank you. Just to entertain a motion to go to executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations with non-union personnel, not to return to open session. So, move.
Second.
Can you get a handful? Voice vote? All in favor?
Yes.
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 Unanimous. Thank you.